Hello beautiful souls. I am so excited and grateful to have each of you here today. My name is Christina. Also known as the Rainbow Warrior here on YouTube. I'm a psychic medium, Reiki master teacher, working out of the Virginia area. And this is my first video in my collection of videos that I'm talking at a semi-normal tone and not a whisper. So I hope that's okay with you. And I just felt called to do that for this session. And I am excited about the theme for our session today. So today's session is going to deal with navigating difficult family relationships or difficult relationships in general. Now what do I mean by that? So this could apply to family members, definitely difficult family members. This could apply to difficult friendships or difficult people that you have within your life. And I'm going to talk a little bit as I go about my own experiences in terms of difficult family relationships, about setting healthy boundaries. And we're going to talk a little bit about preserving your mental health in the process of that. And again, purely from my own experience. So I will say, if you have a family member right now that you need a restraining order against, or if you have a relationship that requires a restraining order, or some form of protection from a police official, please do not use this video as a substitute for those things, okay? Please don't. I want each of you to always be safe. And so definitely do not use this video as a substitute for those things. So I should say going into this session, that this ties in a lot to the death in the family that we recently experienced. If you are a frequent watcher on my channel, you probably remember from last week I mentioned that we had had a death in the family. I personally have a difficult relationship with my parents and I know so many of us do. But I definitely have a difficult relationship with my parents. I was brought up in a very strict religious Southern Baptist household. And so there was no room for any sort of woo-woo-ness. You know, a lot of people still think that Reiki and energy stuff in general is very woo-woo. There was no room for any of that in my parents' house. It was a very toxic and restrictive house. I was made to feel very early on that I was bad, that I was a sinner, you know? Not to make this session achy or spooky, but that was my experience. And that continued into my adulthood and intensified. Because I myself didn't resonate with the energy of organized religion, if that makes sense. So in my twenties, when I began to get my life together and start moving out of my parents' house, they basically gave me an ultimatum that if I didn't stay in the house until I got married, they would not talk to me anymore. That it was sinful for me to move out prior to marriage. So I moved out and tried to reestablish that relationship with my parents. I thought if I gave them space, that eventually they would come around. And that day never came. So I usually only see my parents at funerals. In terms of funerals for our family. And that usually comes about once every 10 years if we're lucky. And that time rolled around last week for me. My great-grandfather had passed away, he was 98. And I knew that my parents were going to be at this funeral. So immediately, you know, it had been many years, 10 plus years since I had seen them. But my mind, when I knew that I was about to see them, immediately went to a not-so-healthy place. I started thinking about my body image, "Oh my gosh, I'm gonna have to see my parents. What am I gonna wear?" My mom was always very critical of me and my weight. So I immediately started worrying about those things. And it did not take long for me to realize that this was not a healthy mental state to be in, right? So prior to the funeral, my husband had brought up to me if I had thought any about re-establishing or trying to re-establish some connection with my parents. And I had to really think for a moment about why I appreciate the relationship that my parents and I have today. And that relationship is we don't talk. And we only see each other at funerals. And what I realized was that after all this time, my parents still had the ability to make me feel unhealthy mentally. You know, definitely brought up some issues of body dysmorphia, boundaries for myself. So that's something that I've really been mulling around in my head for the last two weeks now, really. Was if this was a boundary that I was willing to keep established. My own parents are not as young as they were. You know, just as life goes, we all age and my parents are definitely aging. So I think my husband's intention of bringing this subject up to me was because my parents are aging and approaching the golden years of their life. And eventually that will mean that their time to come for passing will eventually come. And I think my husband's intention was to remind me that it's always an opportunity to either keep that boundary that I have between my parents established, or I could drop it at any time. Basically, he said, "There's no right or wrong answer, whatever makes you feel most safe." So I really thought about that over this week, about how we are all constantly navigating these difficult relationships in our life. And how that relationship and how we deal with it can have definite effects on our life, our mental health, our physical health. And I definitely noticed that for myself in this time since my grandfather passed. So anyway, what energy I would like to bring into this session is no matter what type of relationship you have with this difficult family member or family members, I'd like us to use this time in this session to remember why we are in the place that we are in with that family member. Is it safe for us to be around them? Do we trust them? Are they predictable in terms of their behavior, or are they unpredictable? Do they make you feel safe based on them being unpredictable in their behavior? Did you just have a minor disagreement with this person and both of you have not apologized yet? You know, is it something minor? Or is it something much bigger? That you want to keep that boundary in place for in order to preserve your mental health? That's what I would like for us to ponder during this session. There is no right or wrong answer in terms of how you move forward with difficult family members. I will say for myself, what I've been thinking lately is, based on those things I just said, are my parents predictable? Can I predict their behavior? No, I cannot. Do I trust my parents? Do I trust my parents to keep me safe? No. Do I think it would be healthy for me to re-establish a connection with them? No. After, you know, much thought over these last few days, I don't think it would be safe or healthy for me to. Purely based on how I saw myself react, knowing that I would have to see them just for like an hour at the funeral. So I'd like for us to use those same questions for ourselves. Do you feel safer on this person? Was it a big disagreement on a big issue? Or was it something small that maybe you could start letting go of? Are your boundaries clear in your mind, whatever the case may be? But let's get clear on our boundaries with this person or persons. And let's ask ourselves those questions. Do we feel safe? Do they hold us in a safe place and one of cherishing? Do they cherish us? So much so that they would never want to hurt us? Again, it's not realistic to say that, you know, we'll never hurt someone else. Because we absolutely do. But is it purposeful? Is it malicious? That's the questions that want us to ponder over this session. Alright, so so sorry for the long intro, but let's get going. So I'm gonna start by gritting your body with this Celestite. It's a beautiful blue stone. And I brought out several of these clusters for us. But these clusters call in the Angelic Realm so much. And I find I received so much clarity on issues that I might be pondering about when I call in my own angels. So if you're open to it, I'm going to grit your body with the Celestite. And as we do, set an intention to call in our own angels into the space. Alright, so this behind your head. Set this in your left palm. Right, set this one in your right palm. Set this one at your feet. And I have a piece of Tumbled Celestite. And I'm actually going to sit this right behind your head, right where your spine meets the base of your skull. This place is known as the Seal Chakra, it's one of the higher chakras. It's also known as the Well of Dreams. The Mouth of God, which is right there. I'm gonna set that right behind your head. Just setting the intention that this stone help unlock any energies which may be stuck in this space and release them in perfect comfort and perfect alignment with what we need most of this time. Here are Archangel Michael Spray. And let's see, this one is Protection Spray with Reiki Charged Amethyst Crystal. This has Palo Santo and lavender fragrance, angelica, lemon, blue cypress, and vetiver. And it smells heavenly. But I'm just gonna spray this around your aura, setting the intention of holding you in the most comfortable space as you ponder these questions. And I also want to set the intention that this spray help loosen up that tense energy, that nervous energy. Perhaps you might be getting ready to see a family member or a person that you haven't spoken to in a while that makes you feel nervous. And I just want to dispel that energy and push it away with this spray. Because we are so powerful, we forget how powerful we are. We are so, so powerful. Alright. Starting, I'm just gonna spray in archway over your auric field. Spray in front of us. Just setting the intention to push out any energies from this other person or persons that's made you feel less powerful than you are. It's made you feel less than, disempowered in any way. Spray behind you. Just focusing on releasing that energy. My sweet Ruby girl is also another protector of our energy circle. So anytime I hear her bark during our sessions, I know she is just further chasing out that lower energy, that negative energy out of our circle and work space. I have here, along the same lines of calling in the celestial realm, I have here my Angel Orchords Point and Tower. And what I would like to do is to pluck out the energies of projection that we receive so often from these difficult family members or difficult relationships in our life. So often, because they're so hyper-focused on us, they send us all this gunk. Just achy energy that they're trying to project onto us to make us the person that they envision in their own mind. So we're gonna pluck that out of our energy field so that we can receive more clarity in terms of what we want and how we wish to proceed with these people or person, persons in our life. Alright, so first I feel like I'm sensing some projection energy just around the jaw. Also, I feel like it's a reminder for some of you out there with this energy around the jaw. To speak your truth doesn't mean that you have to be careless with other people. Doesn't mean that you have to be careless with their feelings. But it does mean that we should honor how we feel. And if someone is making you feel uncomfortable, disempowered, we're allowed to tell them that. So often, especially as women, we feel like we have to kind of zip our lips, button it up. Because we don't want to be viewed as causing a scene. We don't want to be viewed as crazy or emotional. But we have every right to voice how these people make us feel. My Reiki teacher taught me a phrase that I think of often. Whatever you don't express, you repress. And I think that is super applicable in this situation. How often do we repress what we really feel about someone else? And again, not saying that you have to be careless with someone else's feelings. Not saying that. But if someone is being hurtful to us, making us feel less than, we have every right to say, "You hurt me. This is why I feel this way. This is what you said." My own guides are reminding me of this right now, so this must be a message for someone out there too. If you're dealing with narcissistic people, quite often they will make you feel like the crazy one. They will gaslight you. Tell you, I didn't say that. I don't remember saying that. "I never did that. What are you talking about? You're too emotional." We hear that a lot from people to gaslight, right? My parents say stuff like that all the time. "I don't know what you're talking about. I never did that." Yeah, you did. But I also want us to be able to have and use our own discernment in terms of if it's even worth engaging with these people that we're focused on for this session today. Is it worth it? Is it gonna be a productive conversation? If you know that this person is usually one that leans into gaslighting you when you express how you feel, then is it healthy for you to even express how you feel? It's all questions that we have to ask ourselves. Feeling some around like the throat and underneath the jaw here? My aunt told me many years ago, she said, "You can't ration with irrationality." And it's so true. So if you're dealing with someone that perhaps is irrational, consider keeping that boundary enforced. Consider staying no contact with that person until they have the capability of getting to a rational place within their own mind. Around the throat. What I'm feeling here is almost like, it's giving me like a frog in the throat type of feeling, but it feels almost like it's attached to words never expressed, words never spoken. So perhaps if you don't feel safe to meet with this person and express your truth, maybe write a letter. You could always write the letter and burn it. Have your own ceremony for yourself without involving that other person. And finally, I want to focus on plucking out these things that these family members or friends or relationships have made us feel about ourselves that are absolutely false. Whether that be tearing us down about our appearance, the way we talk, the energy that we have. You know, how often do people say, "You're way too much" in terms of your energy? They say that, "They're just not your people," you know? But that's what I want to focus on. I want to focus on removing and plucking out these imposed, disempowering thoughts that these people have sent to us, okay? So I'm gonna focus around the third eye as well as the throat, okay? So just focusing on the third eye. Just plucking out these imposed thoughts. These unsupportive narratives that have been created about us by someone else. I'm hearing this on repeat in my head, so this must be a message for someone out there. I've heard, and I learned in my own healing journey in terms of the difficult relationship that I have with my parents, I learned that my parents made their own decisions based on the level of knowledge that they had at that particular time. And that also means that they made their decisions also based on their own traumas that they experienced within their life, traumas that they have yet to heal, right? So we can see from a particular perspective why these people behave the way that they do. Whether that be that they had, you know, huge traumas in their own life that they've been unwilling to deal with. But also that they were operating under a specific set of circumstances that perhaps dictated how the chips fell in that particular sense, you know what I mean? Basically meaning our parents, these people that we have difficult relationships with. Everyone, you know, has difficult stuff in their life that they deal with. Everyone has their stuff, right? But again, this is not an excuse for bad behavior, if that makes sense. That's what I was hearing my guides say. Again, this is not an excuse for bad behavior. You know, I had one of my parents telling me all the time, "Oh, my mom died when I was young and this is why I am the way I am about these things." But they'd never moved on from the death of my mom's mom. So you know what I mean? Like it's all these little things that keep people feeling in a state of victimhood almost. Especially with narcissistic parents, they love to stay in that state of victimhood. That does not excuse their bad behavior. And that does not mean that eventually you say, "Okay, fine." You know what I mean? Alright, we'll just, we'll remove all my boundaries. You can be back in my life and abuse me how you see fit. You know what I mean? That is not an excuse. Alright, around the throat. Are these people accepting of who you are in every sense of the word? Also, I just heard that. Is this relationship supportive of you in every sense of the word? Because it should be. Okay, much better. I have here our Energy Palo Santo and Sage Smudge Spray. Just going to spray this around your Crown Chakra where I've just done those removals. Just to start some energetic healing there, okay? Almost like some energineous form. Brought out Selenite. And I just want to comb this around your aura to just move out any of that leftover gunk that these difficult relationships often impose in our energy. Always remember, you're never wrong in imposing a boundary of yours, never. you're never wrong in imposing a boundary of yours, never. We work so hard to heal our wounds, you know, emotional, physical wounds and then reach a state of safety. And oftentimes, especially narcissistic relationships that we have, they come flying back like a boomerang once we start healing ourselves. It's almost like it's this little test from the universe. I hate using that word, but it's almost like this little test to see if we've learned our lesson. Let's just comb out any of that energetic gunk. That this relationship is infused in our life. Any narratives in our minds that these relationships changed permanently. How often do we feel like super confident about ourselves and then these people come into our lives and they start pointing out all these things about us that they don't like? You know, for instance, like my mother saying, "Sure you want to wear that? Makes you look heavy." I didn't think I was heavy, but she did. And we want approval from these people. So that that little comment changed how I thought about myself and how I viewed myself. And I still work on that for myself in terms of my body image. But that's what I want us to focus on, these little comments that they made. Changed the way that we saw about ourselves. Let's let those go. See them for what they were. It was their own insecurities. Their own issues projected onto us. Going to go around your back here. I have some stones for today's session. First I have this desert rose. And I picked this stone today. It's hard to see in this, but there's these little white intentions around the stone. It's also known as desert rose selenite, if I remember correctly. And the white that I'm seeing here is those little pieces of selenite peeking out from the stone. But there's a legend about the desert rose that there is a specific spirit protector. So sorry about Ruby. She's chasing some more darkness out of our circle. But I was reading the legend again of the desert rose. And it says that there is a specific spirit protector within each of these pieces of the desert rose that are specifically meant for the owner. And that that spirit protector will be with you for life. And I definitely wanted to bring that out in this session because how often do we feel like so raw? Like we've been burned again? Like we've just gotten mangled from re-involving ourselves with this difficult person in our life? How often do we feel like we're so twisted? Just raw? And we just want to cling onto something and get back to that place of feeling comfortable? And in these times when I feel raw like that, like I felt last week when I saw my parents, I called on my own spirit protectors and spirit team and asked them for help. That's the energy that I would like to bring in. Knowing that at any time, you could always call in your family and spirit. Your loved ones, ancestors, your guides and your angels. Ask them for clarity. And ask them, "Hey, is this person meant to be in my life? I don't want to be hurt by them anymore. I want to keep them out of my life." If it's a small disagreement that you've just had with that person, you can get clarity on that with them. I have here this leopard jasper. And I brought this out for us to be able to access our animal instinct. And I don't mean that in a sense of being animalistic. But I mean that in a sense of being able to very easily access our own innate intuition. Um I find so often that with difficult relationships with other people, so often when these people are trying to re-enter our life, they're trying to rush us into letting them back in our life. Um you know, "Why can't you forget about this? Why can't you let this go?" Um you know, they're trying to rush us, trying to gaslight us so that they can get back into our world. And so in these instances, it's so nice to be able to slow down and very easily access your intuition. So that you can say, "Wait a minute, no. Do this on my time." Right, so we have that. How cool is that? It's got all these little intentions on here that looks like mine to be of a leopard or cheetah. Just tapping that crystal all through your workspace around your crown so that you can easily access that innate intuition that we have. That innate animal instinct of knowing, "Wait a second." I had a boundary that I maintained. I laid a boundary down in this situation and I'm going to keep it up. I have here some uh lapis lazuli and some blue calcite. But I brought these out for the throat. Um I brought this out so that you can very easily speak your truth with love at the forefront. Being able to speak your truth without being careless with others, but still being resolute. And still being able to maintain your boundaries. Here's some Florida water. And I'm going to put just a little bit on my hands here. Just rubbing this all around my hands. Just focusing on clearing away any leftover energies within your orc field that are not supportive, that holds you in a disempowered space. Use some Reiki symbols and infuse them in your orb. Just pushing those symbols into your orc field. I have my lavender body oil. And I just want to anoint your third eye and crown. And I just want to set the intention that as I anoint your crown and third eye, this blessed lavender be able to very easily help you access this knowledge, this innate intuition of yours. Anytime you are confronted with a situation that involves this difficult person. You are very easily able to access this. Right, let's fluff up your orc field. So it's nice and big and bright and fortified. Around your back. Okay, the last. Have our aura juice. Help infuse those necessary energetic vitamins into our orc fields. So we can move about our day without feeling imposed upon, also getting that good energy boost that we need. Because how often do difficult relationships zap us of our energy? Definitely does. Alright, just going to spray this all around your orc field. In front of you. Behind you. Very good. I hope this session was helpful for you. I hope that you're able to very easily establish your boundaries with these difficult relationships. Very easily assess whether or not they are continuing on this path and journey with you in your life or whether they're not. And I wish each of you peace in making these decisions. I send each of you so, so much love and joy and appreciation whenever and wherever you are in our world right now.